This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah.
All of me in the work. Go call, Dan.
Mayor Trevio.
Here.
Commissioner Butcher. Mr. Compost.
Here.
Commissioner Gandy.
Here.
Commissioner Bowles.
Mr. Compost will lead us in prayer and pledge.
Join me in prayer, please. Have you followed the couple for you this evening and we ask you to do what is called. We want to thank you, Lord, for allowing us to gather here tonight. We want to thank you for all the blessings you bestowed upon us already and all the prayers you've already answered. We ask you to guide us in serving this community as best we can, especially those in most need. We also ask that you protect all our state employees, especially those first responders. But we also want to ask that you keep everybody safe, especially in the upcoming Fourth of July celebration. That you protect all our properties, our homes, and especially our citizens, keep all of us from receiving any undue harm. And we just ask that you hear our prayers, Lord, and we ask for our Lord Jesus Christ, who lives in the name of the Father, and the Holy Spirit, one God, forever and ever.
Amen. I believe that the angels stood by our feet in the States of America and to the world who says what mission I want to hold in this world for the benefit of justice. I'm so grateful to stay in Mexico because this is the end of the world, a perfect period of shit among another culture.
Thanks. Okay, moving on.
I like making a question through the.
The proposal was made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Compost, there is no discussion, go call Bo Shan.
Commissioner Compost.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Mayor Trevio.
Yes. You have no motion.
I think most of the we considered minutes said submitted from June 14th, 2021. Thank you.
The proposal was made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Gandy, certainly discussion. There no discussion, go call Bo Shan.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Compost.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Trevio.
Yes. Moving on to Commissioner and Staffing force, Shan.
Uh, nothing to discuss, no.
Thank you. Thank you, Shan. Moving on to Treasurer, Mr. Dobbs.
Um, I would like to thank everyone for coming. I appreciate the commissioners, the opportunity that I have now. I like to. My name is Anthony Dobbs, I'll be the treasurer for now. I appreciate y'all for showing up. I'm very excited to start, this is actually the first day, so it's a good first day. I'm excited for the team that we have together, we actually have people coming in Monday, hopefully starting Monday. So that'd be awesome as well. Also excited, uh. I'm not excited to be here, I'm excited for the. Um, I said I want to be as transparent as I can with all council members, public, anyone, my door is open. Any questions, I am open for it, I'm ready for my team to start as soon as we can, like I said, the day was a great day, got a lot done, got a lot, a lot, I've had to talk to a lot of people. Needs, wants, got everything ready to go, and so I'm ready to start with my team, and they're ready to go, and I appreciate the opportunities that y'all gave me. Thank you.
Or have anything for Mr. Dobbs.
Uh, Mr. Dobbs, Anthony, thank you for being here with us. Anthony is a huge part of what we need to turn into a love park.
I try, I try.
I'd like to say congratulations, and I'm looking forward to having you here. If you have any questions, anything, don't hesitate to ask. It's transparency, something that we all.
Transparency, transparency, communication, likes, right, thank you. Everyone should have the same age. So we're here for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbs. Moving on to, uh, Mr. Bowles. Something we didn't put on the discussion item this evening, which basically read from the insurance company called Reinsurance, compared our liability insurance with treasurer. She had contacted me right before the meeting, told me what our estimated cost will be for this coming year of 2021. It will be an act and I want our next agenda. The coverage will cost us about roughly about 50K more than the previous year. And the only reason why it was 20,000 roughly what we currently have, but the additional 30 is mainly because of liability of the cost of the new act. What is that called, unlimited act or the limited boss?
I think some changes as far as law enforcement liability, those types of things.
Yeah, so that, that's what we got, we just got the state level, if they pass that law, it's, you know, no longer a million dollar, they don't put a cap on it, it's not a cap line, so it's going to increase our rates. So we're looking at a rate of 50K, roughly a little bit below 50K increase this coming year. I think next year, I think we most likely go out for bid, I think.
What area was your idea, so we, well, okay, another one, yes, we didn't do that.
Yeah, I believe not, because that's the only doubt, uh, this, this go around, and so next year we could look out for bids. The positive note on this, going to our medical insurance group, uh, will be most likely. It's receiving a premium of a little over 100K back, so that could offset the cost of this one, that's what I'm saying. So we're going to get from our health insurance, we'll get a, uh, some revenue in return, but this one's going to go up. So we did get on our healthcare side, and most likely the people that are figured for next year, the most likely go down again next year, that's. My partner said, I need to be right before the meeting, because I was doing all this, but I think it'll be a better next four nights, three gentlemen, on our next four week. So it'll be a better presentation, what I mean, I just will test out because it will be on that time, because it is increasing. And she, uh, Jane will email this package to me, she sent it to me, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact me, read on that, um, any further discussion.
All wishes you good.
Yes, sir, everything that she sent me is one directed to you, sir. Jane, send that out, that way if you have any discussion or any questions, you can contact her directly, and that would be up here. There's no reason I say that, because it won't be on discussion, it'll be on action, that we have more information than what I provided to you this evening. Commissioner Compost.
Good question, why? Yes. Anyway, uh, I don't know if you have the answer. Mission meetings, uh, back, we discussed hiring some high school, uh, students, or as, you know, so. How was that? He started, uh, Commissioner Compost, that was, um, two commission meetings ago, we did have a discussion item and the direction as far as from the way the commissioners was, that we did need to move in that direction. But currently, right now, we did not budget for those positions, the positions that we do have for those, in those, the hands are currently filled. So we would need a budget adjustment to fill those positions, or to add an additional, uh, budget, or for extra funds for those, to hire those positions. So currently, right now, it is not open to hire any additional personnel. Just really, we need to look at that as a discussion item, hopefully as a, uh, a whole suite mill. That's next, we're to provide the. I think it's, uh, the due time. It's consolidated.
Commissioner, in. Jane.
Um, nothing except we will be closed on Monday, in observance of July.
Or have any questions for Jane? Moving on.
He's actually on my screen, he gave me a call probably about 30 minutes, they had a hay fire on the outside of town, and they actually had a couple other calls, so he's actually covering over at the station. They actually had to call in Hobbs, one of the ambulance services to help cover town, since they were so spread out. But I did want to announce that Fay Ferguson, um, she came on board, she was actually our interim over at Senior Center, and she was hired as our director last Wednesday. So this is Fay Ferguson, um, she will be acting the main director for the Senior Center. We do have another personnel that will be coming in, actually it was another runner up, that we offered the position to the assistant. So Fay will be working with her and, and getting all the same stuff done and everything. So we will be hiring one more to help out Fay at the Senior Center.
Are they working for a clerk there too?
That's going to be the clerk position.
No, why, we, we, we're getting the assistant director and then also someone to take my position.
Okay, so there is going to be another.
So we're out there's two.
Yes.
You're correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So. So, um, just to let everyone know that we are excited, that we are having the rain, it's easing up on some of the water usage, letting everything come back to normal. Back two weeks ago, when we did have a little bit of water shortage, and thank you to the personnel and everybody else that helped us get the levels back in. As far as right now, everything, the transducers are all up, the skater system's all up and running, but we haven't had no hiccups. Little lightning over the weekends, took out one of our, didn't take out the well, but communications for the well, we had to go out and restart it, blew the breakers back on, everything like that. But everything's going good on that. Still have not had any more further contact with New Mexico DOT on the, on the project, New Mexico 18, we are currently waiting on the summarized time sheet layout plan and everything. I know Constructors Inc., um, as of July, actually June 1st, they started to contract on the RFP for the Gilmore property, so there will be the plan out there that they will be controlling out of and everything for the main project. And I definitely will, once I know, once we do get a meeting set up, you guys are more than welcome, I'll let you guys know, so have more of the city commission involvement in that project with them. The city is doing, I believe it's 1.3 million dollars of water and sewer upgrades going down the hole, the center of the street. So we definitely, in communication and everything, will be directed towards you guys through myself. Um, other than that, just moving forward, um, with getting Anthony started today, it was kind of new to me to get to, get to, get him in this position and everything, so. But we did get him all signed up, looking forward to working with him, have got him kind of all set up, and actually there will be, just like you said, there will be another position. Brianna, she put in her two weeks notice, about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, so we will be filling her position with, um, Manuela Hernandez. She actually comes in and starts the background check and everything tomorrow, she has 25 years of experience, um, and accounts receivable and accounts payable, and we're seeing a lot of. So I think she would be a great asset to the team, so just moving forward on that behalf.
Any questions about Bo?
Yeah. Part of Main Street, the grade edge on there, are they going to have culverts going under the streets instead of going over the street?
Yes, sir, they're going to do an inverted crown, which actually is going to drain to the sides, and, um, they're going to have two, that was the, why it had to progress a couple of different. To go out for bid and then to come back in, because they changed actually the consistency of the pipe material. I believe that it's going to be anywhere from 65 to 72 inch culverts, there's going to be one on each strap, and they are going to invert it grounds to drain to the sides and go out to the new drainage pond, it's going to be on. North or southeast corner of commercial, so everything will be draining out to no more opening going through. Um, it's going to have smooth transitions, Main Central, Washington, all that stuff is going to have smooth transitions.
You said in front of the courthouse, you're going to address that too, where that water pools?
Yes, sir, that's one of the, for the, currently right now, everything drains down, so I believe one of the outlets is going to be in that corner for the drainage to come down and to catch everything off. And that was one of the things we did discuss with the engineer, that to help us, because it does, it's kind of, it drains to the west off of Central, but then the inversion, or the inverted part of Main Street drains down into it, so there's no, nothing for escape. Yes, sir.
And as far as, uh, have you been able to hook in anything as far as the skater? And we were talking, I understand it's five inches, but just wondering if you move forward on that.
Not, and I, I do want to still get with you on that one, that Lee County Electric's using and kind of see that portion of it, but we do have another high tide system that does all of our skater, our lift station skater. It's actually all computer analyzed and everything, or it's all actually Verizon, through Verizon, so there are a couple of different aspects, but I have not had the time, sir. But I definitely will, will be getting a little more on the skater system.
I wanted to ask you, with First Street, have we had that patent taken care of, or is that?
No, sir, I have not heard anything from the, the engineering company on getting those documentation of the electrical portion of it, and getting it over to finalize that portion of it.
So we got to go a different route, or what have we got to?
We, we definitely, can definitely reach out to the VP Terra, which is the engineer, not the engineering, but the, the main, main person on that portion, or the, the property. And it was his engineer that, that is going to design the site, definitely will get with them.
Okay.
It's, um, Cobblestone's Lightning Extension Project for the hotel down where the property is.
Any questions, any other questions? Who should we get? All good. Moving on to, uh, city attorney.
Uh, nothing to report, thank you.
Any questions about Bo? Moving on to public comment.
I am Leslie Bowles with the Levington Chamber, and I have some exciting news, Party in the Park is happening this Sunday at Shefrill Park. We were lucky enough to have some of our chamber members really kind of step up to the plate and take some, uh, action on having some events up there this year. Of course, with the way it's been looking, uh, for the past year and stuff, we were kind of on the fence if we were going to even have something. But we do have some events that have been lined up. We have Larry and Genesis Garza that have taken over the fishing derby for us, basically running it. So we are going to have a fishing derby with lots of prizes and lots of giveaways and stuff for that, so that'll be Sunday morning, registration at 7:30. Then we also have one of our other chamber members, Isabella Sines with Custom Glam is, uh, basically taking point for us on a street fair. So we have over 35 vendors that are going to be out there from 1:00 to 7:00, um, with food and all kinds of booths and fun activities. Also, we'd like to say thank you to Waste Management of New Mexico, they have provided, um, over 500 party favors for all our kids. So 500 kids come into the park, we're going to have a little treat for all of them, so we really are happy about that. Um, we also have the Boy Scouts in Levington are going to have a flag raising ceremony, so we're going to get the big flag out first thing in the morning at 8:00. And, uh, we also are going to have some, uh, small kid activity games from, uh, 4:00 to 6:00 in the evening. And then, of course, the fire department will be out there at 9:00 PM with the fireworks, so we're excited and hope that, uh, the community of Levington comes out and at least has some family fun this year at the park. So also, uh, does anyone have any questions about Party in the Park? Also, I'm here because I'd like to introduce one of our other chamber members, this is Martin Laura with Burger Builders, and he has been a member of the chamber since he has, uh, purchased Burger Builders from Ronnie Reader in 2019, correct? And so he was just telling me that he has retained the number of employees that he's had through the pandemic, which was a good thing. And, uh, he is always excited to be such an active part of the community, and I think he knows a lot of the people here. But I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce Martin Laura with Burger Builders to say a few words.
Thank you, Leslie.
My name is Muffin, I'm actually from, uh, Don Hating, from Hobbs, but, uh, I've actually become real accustomed to Levington now. Uh, one of the things me and Ronnie had talked about prior, me taking over Burger Builders, was, you know, him being here 35 years, me coming out from Hobbs, you know, kind of fairly new. But, um, you know, the, the, the small community has been very receptive, and so I'm very, very thankful for everybody here, you know, and with John as well, he's been, you know, anytime I need anything, he's there, and as well as Leslie. So, uh, I just kind of want to introduce myself, I know I will be applied for a permit as well, for a beer and wine permit. And any questions, I'm open for any questions, you got my, my app for me?
Oh, my, yeah, sure, sorry, I'll go and talk things for. The original effort system, huh?
Yeah, exactly.
Together, a long, long time ago.
Yeah.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Paul, I appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate it.
True love.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Anybody else? Further public comment, moving on to the non-action item, why?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, we do have a touch finger, um, here today, if he wishes to provide the commissioner with an update on the Manchester Court project and city of New Mexico.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you again for having me, I, uh, we recently had a meeting, myself, Chief Rodriguez, Mayor Trevio, had a meeting with the architectural team and, uh, the AOC. We didn't get a, we didn't discuss the finances, that's going to be in our next meeting, so I, hopefully, next meeting, uh, or our next meeting, I should say, with the, uh, with the AOC. And so hopefully I'll have some answers for those questions for you at the next meeting. But as for the actual architectural design, uh, long story short, we're looking at the first week of October, having the, uh, architectural design ready. And from there, I've been told it's a pretty, pretty relatively quick turnaround time to, uh, to start, start the project from there now. When we're talking to, talking to Lee County residents, I'm preaching to the choir when I say there's still things that can go wrong after that stage. Uh, but we, uh, during the meeting, I was, you know, I was kind of, uh, priding and seeing like, you know, what, what are the things that could delay that first week in October? And I got the, I got the, the sense that they were very confident that it wouldn't be delayed from that, from that first week in October, that we would have the plans and we, uh, from there, we would be fairly quickly able to, uh, to, uh, start the project. Uh, I, I think that it's, if, if this does, uh, you know, knock on wood, if this, this, this does go forward, uh, on this timetable, I think by November, we're going to be, we should have our golden shuffles by November, uh, and, uh, ready to, ready to start from there, so. I'm, I'm hoping so, and I, I, I just said it on record, so I may have just jinxed the whole thing, but, but I feel, I feel confident. They, they feel confident too, and, and like I said, uh, you know, we, we, I was pushing and prodding and seeing like, okay, what are the things that could push this back? And, uh, they, it seems like they're feeling, feeling fairly confident that at least for, for this stage of the, uh, stage of the, uh, project, that they are on, on track and that by, by, uh, by the first week of October, we should have some architectural plans and be ready to move from that.
Just can you explain, uh, the municipalities involved for design, it's five, and how, our, our design that we chose in the beginning was, I guess they made changes and then they went with five municipalities having the same design?
Right.
Can you explain that?
Uh, well, the AOC did want to try and keep a little bit of a uniform design. Uh, one of the nice things about this, this project is there is a lot of flexibility for, for each municipality to have, uh, you know, to, to tailor it to their, that municipality's needs. So for example, the, uh, you know, Berlin, I believe, uh, yeah, I believe it's Berlin had the drug court. They did not have a drug, well, there, there was a drug court, it's a design, so some of the municipalities, we don't have one. Uh, one of the things that I was curious about is if, if, if Lee County does have an option to have a drug court in the, in the future, it would be nice to have that already in the design. And the way they were, they were talking is it's, it's going to be relatively easy to, to, to modify that, you know, uh, right now, we don't need it, so it's going to be used for clerk space. But if we do down the line, uh, get, get have a need for a drug court, we would, uh, we would have that option, because we're talking about movements, and it's going to be a relatively, relatively easy, uh, adjustment to, uh, to, uh, to accommodate that. Now, I, I believe it was actually Berlin didn't have the drug court, but they had their municipal court in the Manchester court, so they had that unique, uh, development regarding that. So each of the courts are a little bit different, we have Berlin, Rido, so our, and, and of course, Levington. Uh, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that in terms of the interior design, it's going to be generally static, it's going to be, generally each of the courts are going to follow, um, somewhat uniform design. The exterior, uh, the, the local municipalities are going to have more of a say in how the outside of the building is going to, going to look, but in terms of the interior, they're going to try and keep that, uh, that uniformity, which, uh, I think is something that the AOC has certainly been looking at. For their, their Manchester courts for some time, because if you go, uh, right now, to different municipal courts, or excuse me, Manchester courts throughout the state, you need a wide variation of, of what you're getting. And, uh, I know like, for example, Rido, so there, uh, this is very flexible, but there are. And I know like, for example, Rido, so there, this is very flexible, but their Manchester court used to be a car wash and they were able to turn it into a, yes, or Manchester court, which I thought was, whoever, whoever did pull that off did a pretty good job because he never guessed it was a car wash. You could, you, you would guess it was not a Manchester court, but you never guessed it was, it was one time a car wash, so. But I, that's, that's generally the game plan, they are going to keep those relatively uniform, but as I said, there is a little bit of wiggle room in terms of the, of the needs of each community and what their needs are. And, and, and the other thing I will add, and I know I talked about this at the last meeting, but we are going to have a hearing room and a actual courtroom. And some of the discussions we had were, some of the sessions we had at this last meeting with the architects and the AOC were, were somewhat cosmetic things, did we want the bench in the corner, did we want it in the middle of the courtroom? But, but I do like about having the hearing room and the courthouse is it does allow for expansion, so that, I mean, if we're talking about a long-term courthouse, the courthouse is going to be here for, you know, 30 years and we're going to have a Manchester court, a Manchester court there for 30-plus years. If, if we do continue to grow as a community, as we've seen these last, these last 10 years, and if we, if we get the kind of case filings that we've been seeing in, in the past, especially these last 10 years, we will have that option for a second judge. What right now we would not be able to do is hold two jury trials simultaneously, but I'll be honest, even when I was in, in busy courts as an attorney, that was a pretty rare occurrence to have two jury trials at the same time. So I think we'd be able to, to work around that.
On the financial side, what he's referring to is that we're going to have a discussion because since the, since the state delayed the project this last March, we had to make the bond payment. And my discussion was then is that March again, we're going to have to make another bond payment. And the reason why I stated that to him because they didn't provide us with funds because they said that they're not occupying them until they're going to give us any funds. And then so I said, well, we got, we'll take care of this one, once we did take care of what's our bond company, we had an excess amount of funds just in case production. So we took care of, I said, the other ones coming up in March of 2022, and I wanted to ensure that who's going to cover that costs. And that was really one of the focus points on our, on our finance, financial discussion going with Scott and so forth. So that's the subject that's going to be discussed, who's going to cover the payment or we're going to be receiving payments for the master court by, by that period of time. So that's going to be one of the discussions. I don't think it's fair for us to make a payment because they, it was their delay and we covered the first one. I expect us to start the second one. So I think we would work, but there, there wasn't work, they, they, they had no, we had no pushback, but that's going to be a discussion, that is what we're talking about. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the cost was.
Commissioner?
About the bond, yeah, the bond, we already have the bond in place, over $5 million bond in place, but in that multi-million dollar bond, we had money set aside for a hit and, and that, that was utilized for that. We still have money in place to provide another one, but how would it be fair for us? So, and, so that's what our statement, that's what our main focus is on top of. Just ensure that we don't have another.
And I will add, the architects at that meeting did say that they would send me some notes, basically sort of like a timetable of everything that they anticipate, you know, transpiring between now and that release. And as soon as I get that, I will forward that to each of commissioners and of course, maybe if they're, they're interested as well. Yes?
Leslie, roll.
My, my recollection at the, the previous meeting was that once the architectural designs have been approved, from that point, and Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, did they say it was about a 12-month turnaround time from, from the point upon which the plans were approved? That was what, what the architect told me, he said that, you know, if nothing goes wrong and, and as we all in Lee County know, that things can certainly go wrong at that point. But yeah, at this point, we could be looking, I think, the best case scenario is next October being fully into that, into that building, best case scenario.
Awesome. Thank you.
So that'd be next October.
Yes, March period. Yeah, that's why I want to have that discussion early, so whatever we need to do. But they said they were making it right. Like I said, we didn't get any pushback, but we just want the documentation placed before that. You know, 30 days, of course, we're going to have, saying it was going to go to the end of the calendar day, you know, in documentation that we, you know, our expectations from them, they're taking from us. We can adjust the budget to it or whatever we need to hold. We don't have to do that. Any other question about?
Well, if any of you do have any questions, don't hesitate to contact me, I'll be happy to answer them. If I don't have the answer, I will reach out to AOC and, and get those answers for you.
Thank you. You know, since we're talking about the, what, we didn't mention the state building on the RFP.
I believe it's in action.
It is in action. Oh, so we haven't heard your questions. Okay, moving on to the next item. What?
As Mr. Laura presented earlier, that he has came in front of the city for advertising it for his beer and wine license for Burger Builders. So Shannon wants to give more of a brief.
It will come before, the hearing is not this next meeting, but the meeting after that, the second meeting in July will be the public hearing and that's when the commission will vote for approval or disapproval of the, the license.
Any questions? Sure. Maybe Muffin can answer this. Muffin, do you have state approval over it?
Yes.
Did you let us speak on that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, I had to go through the process to apply for it and went all the way to the state, submitted all my paperwork and the court, they submitted it back and now it's just going through the process of the city, you know, getting approved. But I mean, one of the things we thought about honestly was definitely a tough decision to make because we didn't, we didn't want to jeopardize our accountabilities, you know, involved, so we thought, well, I think, small community, we've got some good management down there, we've got about 50% that are able to get licensed to serve as well. So we'd definitely be close circuit, you know, be definitely monitored. It's not going to be a place where we're thinking where we're, you know, go out there and drink, party and things like that. It's definitely with the meal, you know, we're going to try to limit most of the drinking as far as, as far as I go, as you know, a couple of hamburgers or a hamburger with a couple of beers, that's worth it.
Big interracial, anyway, private interracial, anyway, 70 to 30, something like that.
I think so.
Yeah, 70, 30.
Yeah, absolutely.
70% anyways.
Correctly, yeah. I mean, you can't go in there and store a beer, I mean, it's basically your meal and you want something to drink, whether it be a beer or Coke or whatever.
Okay, you looking at bottles or bread?
Bottles, it's going to be bottles, I think it's better controlled that way. We'll have a refrigerator, of course, you know, we'll be able to serve our customers as they ask for it.
Looking at wine as well?
We hadn't, hadn't, I didn't really thought too much about wine because everyone, wine was good with beer. I mean, everybody's going to go with that, the wine.
Change of the medium.
Yeah. So I thought, well, maybe, you know, down the line, at this point, we're just looking at beer for the most part. But yeah, that's another option we're looking at as far as, you know, serving wine as well.
So I'm confused, closest school Yarborough. They didn't choose Yarborough and not. I mean, the difference is, is, no, not the same.
No.
Yeah, because I mean, you're, Trinity is 1,000 feet, you know, and, but Trinity's far about as far as the area ministry, like 1500 or so. I was just intrigued that they would use Yarborough as the closest school when actually they were considering people.
It's low on safety.
Really? I think so.
I think so, I think there was a difference between three to four, beat away from a church or even a school building.
That is yours. But they definitely, definitely need some criteria.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah. It went through the, it went through the city zoning as well, so that was, that was definitely, we need to go through that first process, just to ensure that we're, we're on the right road, we're on, you know, legal for the most part.
The living room, sure.
Stripes.
Stripes?
Yeah. Is it about same?
Register for the station.
Right. But yes, I'm open for any questions, any concerns that you guys may have as far as, as far as the opening, you know, trying to get your permit in there.
We appreciate you coming forward.
Absolutely, thanks so much for your time, appreciate it. Thank you again, appreciate it, sir.
Moving on to action items.
The special resolution 2021-040, functions of standing as only four.
Second, proposal made by Commissioner Compo, second by Commissioner Gandy. Crystal, do we have a list?
Oh, definitely. It's on the board.
Three. Motion.
All three board positions are open.
We position all.
I have a question.
Yes.
Wanted to see counsel to make sure that it wasn't a conflict of interest, maybe of the commissioner being on the board.
Well, I think, you know, there may be an issue that comes up, just like there could be an issue of conflict with the sitting commission members or sitting board members on that particular board. I think as long as you are transparent about it, if, if there is an issue that comes up and refrain from voting or discussion based on what that issue is, I think we should be okay. So if there is something that comes to my attention, I can certainly let you know. I, I think the only thing that may be an issue to consider is that since, since a, an individual would have an opportunity in some instances to either bring it before the commission, if they wanted to appeal one of those decisions, you know, they would have some idea how you would vote either for or against, and so they may raise an issue that they didn't have that same opportunity with an individual that didn't have the same perspective from that, that board meeting. But that's the only thing off the top of my head I could think of. I know we made some changes in decisions that went in front of the board only unless they were appealed up to the commission and then decisions that went from the board to the commission also, but that's the only thing I can see as being an issue. If there's something else that comes up, we can certainly let you know, but I think erring on the side of caution is the easiest way to address some of those issues and just raise an issue and, you know, abstain from the vote or the discussion depending on what it is, and I think we should be okay. You're welcome.
This morning, we're led to a, my five line motion issue by stating that I'm glad to include the names, 12, 11, Dave Rowler and Scott Holt as being approved for re-coming to their propositions.
Motion was made by Commissioner Compo, second by Commissioner Gandy during the discussion. There's no discussion, go call motion.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Compo?
Yes.
Mayor Trillo?
Yes. President, Mr. Bassett, do I have a motion?
This is a very likely question for resolution 2021-41, approval of RFP to state.
Gandy, second by Commissioner Compo.
Mayor Commissioners, we were approached by the guidance center of Lee County, looking for multiple office spaces. They did come over and meet with David Trillo and David Rodriguez. They did, liked the building, kind of took an interest. City did go out for RFP for the facility. It was opened on July 16, June 16, 2021 and for the approval or for the unoccupied portion of the, where the master court is currently right now. Used to be the old Main Street, more course stations, I believe was there prior to it. So did come in with the RFP, $2,500 a month to include water and electricity for a three year lease, so $90,000 within the next three years that we see as revenue for a building that has been vacant for, I believe, five to six years, that portion of it. Just asking for the approval on the resolution. And also it will create nine new jobs in Levington. They will be hiring nine, nine more positions.
Attorney, Commissioner, by the board. There's no discussion, go call motion.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Compo?
Yes.
Mayor Trillo?
Yes. Do I have a motion?
This is Mayor, I have a question for resolution 2021-42, variance in 19 West FDP accessory and club for setback. Second.
Gandy, second by Commissioner Compo.
Good evening, Commissioners, Crystal Ball, planning and zoning. I had a request for a variance on a carport slash storage building. So this structure, if you'll see right to the, my side of the, the building in the very center, my pointer doesn't work on these screens, there's a long structure there that was built without prior permitting, and it has a storage area in the back of it, which is only five feet away from the home. The carport itself is only 10 inches away from the neighboring property. So the carport doesn't make side yards setbacks and the storage building in this unit does not make the setbacks from a main structure. Storage buildings, accessory structures are all supposed to be 10 foot away from a main structure. So when this request come in, we had some issues with getting a state building permit. He, he, the owner attempted to get the state building permit, then state come back on him and told him he had to have engineering because it is a metal structure. So we finally, he just actually got the engineering done this last week. The Planning and Zoning Commission wanted us to go ahead and they approved a variance with the conditions that he got that state permit, that he did get the finalized approved state permit, that it is finally inspected by the state and of course passed that inspection prior to us actually granting. These would be the requirements he would have before the clerk would file the variance with the, with the court.
So what was the board's recommendation?
That, that they, they approve that variance with the conditions.
So Crystal, they have approved, they have received the approval of the building permit? Yeah, is that correct?
No, he has a preliminary approval, but he had to get the engineering, which he did just turn in the engineering, which I put it on you guys' agenda today, I got that this morning, he actually sent that over to me Friday. So he has sent those to the state also. So now we're just kind of, and like I said, it won't turn this resolution in for Shannon to file with courts until those conditions are met.
Does the owner of the property?
Yes, he is, it's Jason Chaffs is his name, Jason?
Jason, you and your neighbors are pretty close.
Yeah, very close.
Did?
Yeah.
Anybody there?
No, I just, I mean, I can claim ignorance, I guess, for doing things before checking into what I need to do before proceeding. I did get my neighbors sign off, actually my next door neighbor, the, the house closest to it actually wants to do one on the other side of his house, just like, it is very well built, it's not an eyesore or anything like that. Like I said, most of my neighbors like it and were asking me for the person's contact to the person who built it, so. Man, the process, like, like Crystal said, I just sent that to the state this morning. They actually did send, Skip actually did come out, the state, for some reason, the state. The state, for some reason, the state scheduled Skip Conley to come do a, an inspect, a final inspection. And he came and looked at it and he didn't know why I was there because I had no permit. So he didn't know why this, they would send him to inspect a building with no, that hasn't got a permit. He did say, just, he just glanced at it and everything. And he said he would sign off on it if there was a permit to sign. So hopefully within, I don't know how long. It took a little while for me, for me to get some information, about a month to get some information from the state. The last time I submitted before I knew I had a pensionary done. So hopefully it'll go quicker this time and get the permit as soon to, to Crystal, to, to you guys as soon as it, I get.
There's no question about it, board, no call motion.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
This is very likely a motion for resolution twenty twenty one dash zero forty three. Peril of temporary street closure slash block party permit, seeing the change revival on this.
Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bolt.
I believe we were approached by the Christian used church conference and asking for a temporary street permit or closure permit for Central Avenue. They do have the packet that they went around to the local businesses and got the okay in the courthouse. Mrs. Mackey, Lock and Stitch, all approving for them to shut down on that day. It is a Saturday. They will have street vendors. Actually, they, in their approval packet, they will have three vendors. Restrooms, speakers, generator. They're going to have musical instruments and a stage set up for the, for the church.
Good afternoon. And I'm with the students. Oh, there's our youth, youth teacher. And he's trying to hold up an event for youth and everybody really in general. And he's having some musical arts and some bringing in here and doing some testimonies and about their lives and about preaching about the work of.
Any questions?
I just had a quick question. Is this one of the two hours?
No, sir. It's going to start. We're going to start at ten AM in the morning. That's just to set up. And then the event starts at four o'clock. Four PM. And it won't be done by ten. And we have till twelve, so we can go ahead and get our.
My concern is, why, great, this is during the, the, right at the end of, it's the last Saturday of the fair. Love Street is the main thoroughfare, as mentioned by other citizens. Have you guys considered that, that it seems pretty busy that they?
In actually. That's, that's one of the reasons we just wanted to shut down Central and leave all open Love Street, Main Street now. Just, just use the central port.
I know Saturday, Commissioner Compost is the, roughly the final day. It does get, that night does get quite busy. But we do have PD and traffic control going main A D and main A commercial. So most of the local will know that Washington and Central are a direct way to commercial to get to the fair. So I think with just Love Street, just blocking off that section, which I believe is only three hundred feet, that one city block that will be closed off, that they will be able to have it. So Central will be open? Central will be closed. Love Street and Main Street will be the ones closed. It's roughly where Big Blue is right now, in front of the corridor, in front of the theater, all the way down to Pam Mackey, Lock and Stitch. You repeat that outside, Mike? You said Central will be closed? No. Yes, Central will be closed. Oh, yes.
So Central Street between the courthouse and the theater, that's going to be closed. Is that right? And Main Street?
Main Street will not, Love Street and Love Street will, they'll be both be open. I was going to say a question. Overthinking it. Really good? Yes, sir. No one requires police presence? Nothing, not in their application or anything. There's not even. There's going to be thin, that, that be open or? Yes, sir. Did you say problem at all? But I do not see a problem with that section of the road being closed.
Yeah, question. Appreciate. There's no further questions, no call motion.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Do I have a motion?
This is very likely to make a motion, consider resolution twenty twenty one zero four four, approval of rental slash reservation of large shelter at Shepperale Park.
Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Gandy. Why?
A couple of commission meetings ago, we did have a discussion about opening up the, the rental of our large facility at our Shepperale Park. After consideration and talking with Jordan Coranda out there, it does take a little bit of cost for us to go back and clean up and make sure that facility is ready for any kind of rental. Sanitation purposes, logging down, engineers all cleaned up for a second day's use. We are asking for the commission to approve a seventy five dollar a day non-refundable deposit that is for the sanitation purposes and get the employee to make sure that everything is operational at the end of the day, it could become trash and everything. There is currently, for the water slides, I believe there is a hundred dollar that they have to put down and they have to have the coverage of the insurance.
No, it's refund.
That one is refund.
This just help because of the cost of, of the city being out there sanitized, being of trash.
So, yes, yes, sir. So just to be sure, why, once a group lays in a shelter, that means no other, no other group can quit. Yes, sir. Once they are, once they rent the facility, the large shelter, our parks and rec department will go put the reserve sign on the outside. They will clean it up and get it ready to use. They do have access to the actual water out there for that. And that will reach with seventy five that will have some personal or income coming back for the use of those utilities.
Thank you. Any? And reevaluating a lot of areas of the city is what is some of the costs that are that we've required throughout the years. What we're doing is evaluating each section, find out where the bosses are at and try to get bare minimum to cover some of the costs. And this is one of them. Running, I don't know if anybody's ever been out there, trash all the clothes, trash all the water. Tables are a mess. You have to be on staff that has bothered and cleaning. Where they have to try to cover some of the costs of one or two employees being out there for a couple hours. And cleaning so much mess. So this is one of the items that the board commission they want to use in the board commission to address. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think seventy five dollars was that I sorted in feed. Call my home where I live, same size town. And they have shelters too. And I asked what their shelters costs were. Fifteen dollars for residents, thirty dollars for non-residents. We charged fifty dollars. I did some math there. Out of fifty two per hour, week, year, you know, and I understand we're not going to run it off of fifty two weeks. I understand that. But some weeks, you'll get two, some weeks, you might get three. For fifteen dollars, we're looking at seven hundred eighty dollars. Thirty dollars, we're looking at fifteen hundred sixty dollars. Now, I read that the cost of cleaning and survives, we're looking at around a thousand dollars a year, somewhere in there.
Yes, sir. And as for the sanitation and for getting out and, and trash bags and everything like that. The, the use of the, the power washer, if it is too bad that they need, do need to go out there and power wash, fill that, possibly another thirty two an hour. Let's clean up, but mainly just to go out there and pick up the trash and make sure everything's picked up. Move the tables back in order and cleaning up for the next one, what is the, the second drywall project.
And I understand you'll be have people, right now we're shorthand, but you have people in the park saying here that.
Yes, sir.
They can pay for that. And Brandon will deal with all that script. It's just my personal feeling that seventy five dollars is, I don't want.
Usually. Were they, were they talking about fifty dollars for the entire day?
For the day?
And then thirty dollars for the non-resident?
Who is this? I was just going to add, is that a state park or just a normal?
Normal park.
Just normal.
We got three here. Our workers start out about fourteen dollars an hour. You know, if it was a two-hour cleanup, it would be fourteen times four, seventy two dollars. Just, just to cover the two hours of.
No, we want to make it that. We want to have people coming out there listening to. So, you know, go out and enjoy themselves to hear what they have out there and use it. So I think that's going to be a concern for a lot of people to be ready then. So again, this is my opinion.
And I think a lot of that's true. If you get someone that are not in, they go out there, they make a mess, let the trash flow everywhere and talk to the park. We'll, and if we have, have a staff, plus the tables are dirty. And then any of the lanes and why it's not sanitized, why it's not cleaned, this other way, they at least have a legitimate reason. But I mean, we can almost adjust the cost. I just feel like if we can absorb some of the costs, be great. Because right now currently it's zero. So when you come to agreement, if seventy five dollars, not the, the number we're looking at. Commissioner Bolt said fifteen, thirty dollars. Lower costs.
That's very good, Dan. But also, I think we also get considered a million workers who prepare the area prior to dirty instead of clean, that is the reserve sign. So that's the thing, it's held an hour of ready to as well. And I just said that afterwards. We thought about the poor workers, just the preparation, a little silly. I'm not opposed to the work. Any fifty dollars? Do you be okay with that?
If we have to save fifty dollars for a non-resident? Being resident, people will.
We think so. Any stuff? It does remain a cost. The transition is a lot of people moving around. We've got a lot of property in shorthand. I, I understand we're supposed to have parks and recs and we're supposed to enjoy something. But I don't think it's a deterrent as much as it is making sure that somebody takes care of it. You're the one who pays the money for it because, you're cleaning up. We're all guilty of leaving more trash. There's just what we should have. So I, I'm fine with it, you know, and maybe at a later date when you come back, if that's too big of a term, it can only cost something like that. At the present time, I think that's a fair reason already. So we can do this all day, all day, so we have two hours or whatever, you know. So maybe you can do a half day rule or something like that. But for all day, this should be, like you say, you're going to have free cleanup, folks clean up. You're going to have a lot of man hours. So most of that probably will be over. I can't believe that way.
Yes, I may. There's also smaller shelters that they're going to use. They use the electric free. So our personnel are having to clean up those areas and they were not getting any compensation for those areas as well. So it kind of covers I guess additional cleaning out of the park and and utilities and that's a big issue. They use our water and they use the electricity as well. And they have it the whole day.
What do you?
Why?
They also, they do have it for the full day as far as the water faucet there for balloons, water booths, activities, water slide, the jumper, the blower, running that jumper. So it is a, a full day event that they do rent it that, that the city staff will go out there the day before and put the reserve sign. So they can show up at seven o'clock, that's twenty, and have the event all the way until nine o'clock. And we do have to go after hours to go and clean that. So or make sure that the very next morning that we're, we're doing the rounds and going up there. So you also mentioned the sanitizing. All of it. Is that pre-use one? Pre-hand. What's that? We actually take, we actually use a backpack sprayer. And we have dilution of san- sanitizing that we go around after, after the facility is cleaned off and everything, we'll go around and spray down on the tables and chairs. And all of the hand stuff that you can put your hands on and go ahead and around. So we're talking about stairs.
One will say anybody else. Motion was made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Gandy, still seventy five dollar rate. No call motion.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
No.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Resolution. Do I have a motion?
This is very likely a motion to consider a council.
Motion was made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Bolt. Why?
Let's turn it over then. Today, I don't have any other questions as you guys might hear. So again, this is an aspect of what might be asked prior to or during the mission. So I'm open for any, any questions that I could answer. Your foretracee. I was unable to get with Tracy Gregg portion left. I was going to get kind of a breakdown of everything, but hopefully I can answer the questions or refer get you the answers shortly. Okay, why? Who is ABSW to the two hundred sixty one ninety five thirteen? It was actually a line extension project out on twenty, twenty twenty two, made for a sewer extension. In our coordinates, we have to be within one hundred feet of a residence. And we were actually a hundred, hundred and eight foot away from our residence. So we made for abortion of that line to be extended out so that the residents could tie onto. Was it, was the residence called? Yes. Okay, sir. It was on twenty. It was on twenty twenty two North Main, uh, on the far side where Main Street didn't, didn't shoot.
Process was slow, but we, we came here and I think that's why I got it, Commissioner Campos and I.
Why? Handicapped water mills, service? Handicapped water services, um, two, three weeks ago, we did have a water issue. They, we found Waterwell thirty one was having an electrical problem with the motor. It actually tripped out and killed three of the breakers in and it shorted the motor out. So it, um, they went out and replaced the wire, check valve and a motor, pumping motor in Waterwell thirty. Um, did another motor move? Yes, sir. It does pump, um, four hundred twenty dollar, four hundred and twenty gallons and made it one of our newer ones. One of our best ones. So without them being, go back into it.
Should our products, four thousand eighty three hours, six years.
I am unsure on that, I can definitely
to repair it a little bit. I'm gonna be in trouble with beer.
I can definitely let you know first thing in the morning, sir.
We're also input on the financial report that, on our account, uh, Commissioner Goddard is working on a federal relief fund. As per speaking, he's reaching out to his sources and uh, over elaborate resolution for that on our main board. So a motion, I'm sure.
Is for the uh, moving store, moving as parks down at the, the town of Perrins. It is very, yes, sir. Maybe nothing. That could be why, but the pollution. What was that concern? So that dang line, what was from?
Is it valid?
Valid. Long enough. It was stable for some. Positive.
Yes. For two thousand, makes sense? Is it?
Was that in service? Smith Power Product, who was the name of its service?
Any other questions, bottom? Roll call, Old Chan.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
This is very, I'd like to make a motion to go into both session, pursuing the session ten and fifteen, uh, Mexico State, N C A, nineteen seventy eight. Subsection H that is seven, pending your plan litigation last book protection versus city of London. And also subsection H eight regarding the lease purchase acquisition or disposition of real property or water rights, potential lease of industrial property. Sorry.
Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Gandy, roll call, Old Chan.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes. So are in those.